Is on the property, only a nursing home can reside on that lot currently. An existing structure is present on the lot and was previously residential, away from zone R six. The zoning of R six is consistent with the surrounding area zoning on the abutting lots and adjacent lots to the northeast and south. And as I said, the lot was previously in zone R six prior to two thousand thirteen. The rezoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and aligns with its goal to provide safe sanitary and affordable housing. And staff recommended the rezoning be approved and planning board unanimously recommended that council approve the rezoning.
Anyone have any questions, Jason? All right, no questions, Jason. The public hearing opens now at, I think it's six oh seven. Anyone who would like to speak for the zoning request, rezoning request? Anyone who'd like to speak against the rezoning request? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed at six oh eight. Oh, okay, I didn't see. Come on up, sir.
Semi Neil.
Come on up to the... Give your name and address.
My name is Semi Neil Junior and I live at ten fifty one North Phil Street. And I'd like to know what you're going to put there. You going to be a nursing home?
It's a residential, residential or back to the village. Yes, sir.
Anyone else who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, we close at six oh nine. Any discussion on the request? Or any question? Okay, going to give a motion.
Mayor, based on the information provided in the staff report and the verbal evidence presented during the public hearing, this request is reasonable and of public interest and consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted land use plans. Therefore, I make the motion that the rezoning be approved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Well, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Mayor, I have one before you move on.
Okay.
I just want to give a shout out to my fantastic community leaders of North Scale Street, I'm listening, Neo and Semi Neil, they have done a wonderful job over the years and just being so community minded and doing great things in our neighborhood. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Thank you for your concern. Thank you, Mayor.
Next public hearing, consideration of a text amendment, two twenty twenty-two dash oh four, to amend Article five, District Regulations, Section two, Table of Permitted Uses, Note twenty-five, which reduces the front yard depth to twenty feet for townhouses. Enclosure two, Jason Harden, Planning and Community Development, he's ready.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Librarian is petitioning to amend Article five, Section two, notes to the table of permitted uses, Note twenty-five, Townhouse Development Regulations in R twelve and R six zoning districts. Currently, the ordinance requires the front yard depth of townhouses to be the same as those in the underlying zoning district. So, for example, in R twelve, it's thirty-five feet of front yard depth, and for R six, it's thirty feet. So, those townhomes have been meet those front yard depth requirements. Staff evaluated the application and found the requirement to be greater than other cities who have townhome front yard depths ranging from below thirty feet all the way down to six feet. So, Librarian is petitioning to reduce it to twenty feet. And we recognize that this front housing attracts people who typically want a smaller yard, you know, with like usually see townhomes built closer to the road than single family. And the presence of city rideaway also extends that because we have a ten-foot rideaway, then your front yard depth starts at where the rideaway ends. So, you can end up having like with a thirty, it's R twelve, you have a thirty-five foot front yard depth, you get a hundred and forty-five feet to the foundation wall. So, it's understandable that we want to reduce the depth of the front yard for townhomes. So, it aligns with our conference plan encourages housing development through the use of flexible planning and development mechanisms. And staff senior management reducing the front yard depth for townhomes, and we recommended that the front yard depth be reduced to twenty feet for townhomes. And the planning board unanimously recommended the approval of the proposed text amendment.
Any questions, Jason?
I have a comment. To make sure that we understand that the footage, I came up here and marked from the front of our bench to those ribbons is twenty feet and to the doors, forty-four feet. So, you can take that into consideration when under voting. And I assume that one of the reasons he wants to reduce this is he can get more apartments in a certain area that way?
I think it's more so having them closer to the, I mean, I think the applicants here to speak on behalf, but my impression is with townhomes, the driveways typically are smaller. You don't really have that long of a driveway with townhomes. And so, by reducing that front yard depth, you can build them closer to the road, which you typically see. So, and in that facet, we don't see any difference in it for it, but I'll let them speak on their behalf on what they're planning.
We were wondering why the, that might have been reserved or something.
I just wanted to make sure that we understood how far, twenty feet and thirty-five feet, so a little bit past the door.
Those of us who are kind of visual, that helps. Anyone else have a question? Jason, does you have a question?
I'll hold it. Thank you.
All right, the public hearing opens at six fourteen. Is anyone who'd like to speak for? Yes, sir.
I'm Lee Bryant. The address is forty-six oh nine Dunn Stride, Greensboro, North Carolina. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of the text amendment to reduce that, and thank you very much for the visual representation. The reason for this is to bring a townhome developments into Redville, it's more of an industry standard. The industry standard building these townhomes is you don't put the townhome way back from the streets, you need to bring the townhomes up closer to the street. And this does a lot of things. It helps promote, excuse me, it helps promote density to get more units on there, but what it does help you do is to cluster things up. When you take these roads and put them in, then you all put the townhomes farther back, you're using up a lot of land, and then you're at the mercy of the topography there. If you can keep everything clustered up, as you know well here in Redville, you have some rolling topography and you need to be able to work with that as much as you can. So, this just kind of brings in line to what the industry standard is. And to your point for the twenty feet, I think what's misleading about this is it's not twenty feet from the road. So, if you're standing in the road, it's not twenty feet to the road. You still have on fifty-foot rideaway and twenty-six-foot wide public street, there's still is about a twelve to thirteen feet grass strip between the back of that rideaway, between the rideaway and the street. So, if you take that twenty feet and you add another ten feet to that, now you're thirty to thirty-two feet is where you land back where the front of these units are. So, it's a little misleading when you read that and somebody says twenty feet, and they think it's sitting up at twenty feet. And we have set them up as close to twenty feet in other communities because that's what, that's what these people want, is they want to be able to have room to park in the garage and park one car in the driveway. But anyway, I think that's probably a pretty good representation. I've got a sketch here, if anybody needs to see, they want more visual stuff, I'm happy to hand out a couple sketches. If not, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to say, I've lived in townhouses, not in North Carolina, but other places. And one of the things that was great about it was that small front yard because the outback didn't take up a lot of my time to take care of the yard.
That's exactly right.
And if you have plants, they tend to take up a lot of that. So, it was very welcoming to have small front yards. And I think also, a lot of times with these townhouses, that's much more appealing than having a huge front yard or long list of front of the house.
I agree.
I assume you've done some market research, because you do this in other places on the web.
I have, I've done a lot.
You recommended, I think you must feel it would be financially a good situation for us and you. I mean, we, I mean, for council elections, we might see more townhouses, we think there's a need for townhouses. This might spur development. And I wonder, if I had been different place, and we hadn't taken ourselves, not doing this.
What it does as well is it brings to, everybody's trying to get affordable housing, that everybody wants affordable housing. Well, if you're adding twenty, twenty more feet to driveways for every unit, that's just not needed, you're adding up the cost of these things. Then now, you know, we're in watershed critical areas and watersheds, you're having to treat the BUA from that extra square footage on there, and then that increases your devices. So, your devices get big, which chews up more area. More area gets you up to less density you get, which makes the houses much more expensive. So, you're exactly right, to promote what you want in this town and to bring the townhomes, you need to come into that industry standard, bring them up closer, and that helps to get that affordability in these townhomes because you're minimizing the construction costs, you're minimizing the hard costs for later on down the road, then your soft costs for these BMPs and stormwater devices that everybody's starting to see around town, they did smaller because you're not treating as much BUA. So, there's a, there's a huge benefit to doing that, aside from just looking at the front of the unit and seeing, you know, your front yard. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone who's had an opportunity to look at some of the new housing developments, the majority of them have small, those front yards. There might be some depth in the backyard, but most of the front yards are small.
And I also think that as we know that we need to get housing for senior citizens because that's a big demand here in Redville, townhouses and garden apartments, and they don't want a lot of property that they have to be responsible for.
Any other questions?
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing no one, at six nineteen, we close the public hearing. Is there a motion? We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Show of your right hand if you're in favor. It's your nows.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bryant, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we hope you are looking here and get moving very soon.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're more than welcome. Next item in the public hearings, consideration of adoption of the twenty twenty-two Redville Land Use Development Plan, composed in partnership with Piedmont Triad Regional Council, enclosure three, Jason Harden, Planning and Community Development Manager, who's already in place, and Don Valerius.
Valier.
Valier, okay. Don Valier, Regional Planner Two with the PTRC.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your agenda packets, you've been provided copies of the final draft of the twenty twenty-two Redville Land Development Plan, composed in partnership with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council and UNC School of Government. Over the past nine months, a council appointed steering committee of representatives from various organizations worked on developing this plan. And these organizations include the Redville Planning Board, the Redville Historic Preservation Commission, Rockingham County School Administration, Rockingham Community College, Antipan Hospital, the Redville Chamber of Commerce, Redville Parks and Recreation Board, Redville City Council, and Redville City Staff. The citizens of Redville also contributed greatly to the plan's development through a community survey, along with two public hearings that were held at R Care and Locust City Brewing. These public hearings were advertised in the newspaper along with Facebook advertisements. We wanted to get as many people as we could, so we did our best to make sure that people knew that these things were happening. And just an overview of what the land development plan is, it's a long-range plan over about twenty, fifteen to twenty years. It provides guidance on future land use zoning decisions, capital expenditures, infrastructure projects, and not to mention it's required by the new general statute one sixty D by the state of North Carolina for us to have a zoning ordinance. This is not an ordinance, though, this is a plan that guides decision-making. It doesn't have an enforcement provision. It's a broad, long-range plan with broad goals, and it's not a how-to guide. You're not going to, you know, these are broad goals, and there are some implementation steps outlined in the plan. However, they are not specific projects necessarily. These would be done typically in your short-range plan. It's typical for cities to do strategic plans, which cover about two to three years roughly, and those cover more, much more specific projects than your long-range plan, which focuses more on your, your vision for what you're trying to do, less than your specific implementation steps. The implementation of the plan would be spearheaded by the council and the city manager. Y'all would look at the plan and see how you want to prioritize implementing it, and then the city manager somewhere would direct city staff on how to implement it with specific projects, whatever we need to do to implement the plan. So, again, it's not something that you're going to look in and find your answers. I wish I could give you a blueprint to, you know, community development, unfortunately, that's not what the land development plan really is, it's your vision for the city. And it can be amended, I mean, these plans, they're living documents, you know, you evaluate them every, you know, usually eight to ten years, you evaluate your long-range plan, you update it, change your data, and then things change, your development priorities change, you know, so you have to update it. So, it's not something that you're going to put in stone, it's going to sit there forever. It's always something you can, you can always change it. And the planning board unanimously recommended that the land development plan be approved. The planning staff recommend approval of the land development plan, and we greatly appreciate everyone who took the time to work with us, to come out to those meetings that were about six o'clock, and all the citizens that completed surveys and came out to the public hearing, we really appreciate that. That's all I have. And I will now turn it over to Don Valier, as, Valier, excuse me, who will go over some more specific to the plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me.
Sorry about butchering your name.
As Jason said, the land development plan is a policy document just to guide development through the next twenty years. The current adopted plan was done in ninety-one, really well done, and it's held up well, but it's thirty years old now. So, it's time to update. The process started last August with the appointment of the steering committee, really excellent attendance and participation by the steering committee. Jason said he had one in your packet, copy of this, so I was just going to go through it a little bit. He really already covered what is the land development plan, that it's a policy document. The why to have it is, of course, to guide land development. Elected officials change, planning staff changes, so the document's there to guide Also, one sixty D legislation, the North Carolina State Legislature updated the enabling legislation for zoning, so if you want to continue having zoning authority, you have to have an updated land use plan. A lot of the, it starts off the land development plan with existing conditions, which covers population, demographics, education, housing, transportation, jobs and commuting patterns. So, the kind of where you've been and where you are now. And then the regulatory factors are just the current zoning classifications and the current zoning map. Then we go into the planning process and community engagement. Like Jason said, there were two open houses that were well advertised. We had the survey and we had the steering committee to get public feedback. Then we developed goals. There's six goals that the city would like to see happen over the next twenty years, and then under each goal, there's several objectives to try and accomplish them. There's a priority strategy of rewriting the city's zoning and subdivision ordinances, and then the goals with the implementation strategies, use of the plan, and then we have the appendix. I know I went over that rather quickly. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have a question?
No, just one comment, thank you for the work you put into this, and everybody that was involved in this.
Tonight, Dick Hales here, he is an adjunct professor from UNC Chapel Hill. Several students from his class helped work on this, and he'd like to speak.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening, Dick Hales. Previously served as planning director down in Greensboro, and I'm acting planning director over Durham Civic County Planning, and got a call last about a year ago from the Department of City Regional Planning at UNC, asking if I would help teach a class that might provide an opportunity for some communities to be able to help meet the new state requirements of one sixty D that were adopted back in twenty nineteen. Always a favorite in local government of a state unfunded mandate, and you hear something new, you have to do, but we're not going to pay you to do it. So, we reached out last May and June, we did some advertisement, we were on clerk's listserv, manager's listserv, and other things through the school government, and we got twenty requests for assistance, and we chose ten of them, thought we could do ten. There were some weeks where that was a little much, but, so we've been all over the state. Y'all are actually the largest city we're working with, and we enjoy it. Just a couple comments about the process. I was last night down in Duplin County, and we're out in Ahoski, and over in Castle County. I bet the Yanceyville folks are curious about what you all are doing back over this way. Yeah, we were both place talking about housing for casino workers and so on. It was good. I recall in the fall, when we were first getting feedback on some of the surveys, there were a whole long laundry list of things people like about Redville, and things people would like to see changed. I mean, it was pages. And the good side of that is people care enough to write it down and so on, but it's also challenging on trying to get it organized and focused, and kind of putting it in the pot and boiling it down. And I remember one thing we got talking about as we were going over the results was, in some communities that don't feel like they have a whole lot of excess cash laying around for brand-new initiatives, a lot of times, a practical approach, I think there's seven pages in here of implementation measures, and a lot of them on the right-hand side column are labeled year one, two, meaning they're the most important or trying to get the most attention. It might be the quickest way to get a win or some positive results out of the plan. But a lot of times, it's, if you can choose a topic that's already up and running, like there was lots of comments and indications about the continued effort to expand the trail system down at the lake and through the town and so on, it seemed to be very strong support from that from everyone we talked to. And then there was, you know, ongoing commitment and a few starts and stops on the depot district and the downtown revitalization. I know I was in downtown Durham when they closed down American Tobacco a few years ago, and was hearing a little bit about the back and forth on the tobacco industry, and I know that can be tough. And then the third thing is, a lot of times, a plan will bring up kind of something new, something new that people kind of get excited about, something that might be kind of something identify the plan with, doesn't necessarily need to be big. We called in a guy named Rodney Swink who came and spoke to our class a couple months back, and he, for twenty-five years, ran the North Carolina Main Street Program, and had been to hundreds of communities around the state. And he said, the question the students asked him was, in a community where it's not obvious how to get some new initiative up and running, what's the most important thing to think about? And he said, find a couple people that really care about a topic, and it doesn't matter what it is, it could be fix up the trashcan over on the corner, put a couple new street trees on a block, clean up an overgrown lot, whatever it is, but try and pay attention to where the energy in your community is, and try and get a small win, because there's nothing like a win and visible results to give people energy to keep going. And I thought that was, that was good wisdom to pass along to you tonight. We think you have a good plan here. There's never a perfect plan of thousands of people going out and turning in surveys, but I think the Blue Ribbon Committee had set up with good cross-representation around the community in the front end, it was a good start. We got good surveys here, and so we think you got a good plan and I offered for your consideration.
And Redville was the largest town?
Yes, sir. Town of Nelson has a hundred and fifty, and I think they're almost all over seventy years old.
I can resemble that.
We'll open the public hearing at six thirty-four.
Is anyone who'd like to speak for the plan? I'm looking real good this time, so I won't miss anybody. Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak against the plan? All right, the public hearing will close at six thirty-four and a half, or six thirty-five. Anyone have any discussion or questions?
I just think this is going to be a great tool for us, I mean, there's so many questions that we have among ourselves, and I think if we read this and listen to our citizens, we're going to find the answers that we want, the answers that we need and we're looking for.
I think we've got an excellent foundation. I think I used that the planning board, the building of a car, and how it travels on the belt, you could take a look at a house, too. The foundation, we've got it, and once we build it, just like was mentioned, we can add a room or remove something, or shape it up, make it look even better, so we've got a good framework to start with. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Redville Land Development Plan of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank y'all so much.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Does this gentleman look like Brad Spencer?
Yeah, he does look.
I told you, sir, when you come in, I thought I was thinking Brad Spencer. He's a local, he's a local, what, uh?
Sculpt, sculpt.
I've been called worse. I've been called worse.
Next on the agenda. Consideration of requests for qualifications, RFQ, for the whole plant generator and MCC replacement engineering proposal at the city water treatment plant enclosure four. Josh Beck already in place.
Good evening, mayors, council, city manager. Before you have the results of an RFQ for engineering proposals I have mentioned for the water treatment plant, whole generator and MCC. MCC is motor control stand. April 19th, we did a solicitation for proposals and on May 30th, we received forward. The engineer firms listed Derrick, Sturgill, Arcadis, Hazen, and Solder and Gil. A committee of us met shortly thereafter on June 8th. And through our evaluations, we determined that Arcadis was the most qualified firm. Some background on Arcadis. They did the high service pumps building that we have at the water treatment plant. So they're pretty familiar with the plan. And then they actually, in their proposal, had two projects very similar to the one we're asking them to design here that was done in the city of Greensville. So through our evaluation, we are recommending that the board let us proceed with the contract negotiations for Arcadis. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Josh.
I think Josh is an expert. We know what we need and who can do it, so we have to rely on you.
This, so just so you guys are aware, we have a very small generator on site now that empowered the plant. But without this kind of infrastructure, we couldn't actually send the water to the city. So you could come, you could bring a five gallon bucket and we'd give you some. But I don't think that's what the city really wants. So by doing this project and summer was instrumental in getting the funding for this, we will be able to obviously provide, make and provide water. I think both of those are equally critical to the city of Greensville.
I think we'll need more than a five gallon bucket.
It will. Bring two, I think. Any questions?
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say, I think he did his research. I was reading again, I think he was very thorough.
Try to be thorough and try to be, you know, unbiased. Try to look at, you know, there. Normally, all the firms are very highly qualified. It's just picking one that is slightly more qualified in most situations. And through the examples that are mentioned and their RFQ, you can kind of find that experience that maybe one has a little more or the other.
Make a comment. When Josh came in, he was flying the plane. He didn't have to learn how to fly. He already knew how to fly. Any other questions or comments? I get a motion for the whole plant generator and MCC replacement engineering proposal.
Motion to allow our city manager and other work director, Josh, to begin contract negotiations with Arcadis.
Motion and a second. End of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. What's your courage, your downs? Next, there's a resolution. Consideration of rescinding existing ordinance prescribing procedures for disposing of personal property valued at less than $10,000 and implementing a resolution for declaring personal property as surplus property with accompanying policy enclosure five. Manager, what?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is in your packet. In 2015, the Greensville City Council approved a closed ordinance prescribing procedures for disposing of personal property valued at less than $10,000. This procedure needs to be updated to reflect, one, the city manager's ability to declare personal property items surplus up to the $30,000 threshold, which is approved by the state. And second, the city's ability to use electronic auction service such as GovDills, which is sponsored by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Therefore, I'd like to recommend tonight that council rescind the 2015 ordinance and then approve the enclosed resolution for declaring personal property a surplus property with accompanying exhibit A that's in your packet. The exhibit details the procedures we follow by the city manager and staff dispose of those personal property items that meet the necessary criteria established by the state. And of course, we'll give you an annual report on those items.
Any questions of the city manager?
I have a question probably. The term personal property, are we really talking about property that belongs to the city? I want to say.
Yes, sir, that's just a term.
Personal property is the right word to use in this case, excuse me?
That it is. That's the general statute that defines it as personal property. But you are absolutely right, Councilmember Westerman, in that it is property owned by the city. That's just how it's referenced in the general statute.
You've got real property, you've got personal property. Real space, dirt in the buildings, personal property. That means it's, you know, first, it's just.
I guess. I don't think about my police background. I thought about personal property, we had seized, got it rid of. But this doesn't deal with that. This has to do with property that's owned by the city and no longer back.
Yes, sir, such as vehicles. If you look at our lot there at Public Works in our garage, I know that our superintendent, since I've been here, has been begging for us to get something in place just for that surplus property.
I'm fine with that. All the others, anything?
Any other questions? Comments? Can I get a motion for rescinding the existing ordinance and implementing a resolution for declaring personal property as surplus? Surplus property. So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. End of discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. We got two updates. Status of downtown streetscape project enclosure six. Manager, what?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. So it's very exciting because of the comp plan that the city council just adopted. It will records goal one in the comp plan is a thriving downtown. And it says, Greensville promotes development to cultivate a thriving downtown with a wide range of shopping, dining, recreational, culture, residential opportunities, giving a new life to currently vacant buildings and providing a diversity of attractions that draw people downtown. And I'm very happy to report we have kicked that process off with our downtown streetscape. So I think this is a great example of how the city of Greensville, Mayor Norman, and city council are already putting this comp plan to use. So what you have in your packet tonight, on June 24th, 27th, and 29th, city staff, we visited all the businesses that we could that were within reason. And we've also sent out a mass email and letter to any businesses that will be impacted by the streetscape on Scales, Gilmar Settle, and on Market Street. In your packet, you'll see your attached timeline. Mural Park repairs are underway now. Mural Park, the biggest thing is we've had a sinking issue. And if anyone who's went behind the last couple weeks and saw the construction that Public Works has done an outstanding job doing, I understand why we have a sinking problem. So our goal is, is to tear off the retaining wall, the shrubbery. We'll have to, as you saw, we've removed the brick pavers, fill that in and build it back just the way it is, just for safety and liability. Once that's completed, we are going to start on the 200 block west. That's projected to be August through October of 2022, followed by the 200 block east, which is projected to start October through December of 2022. And then the 100 block west, which is projected to start December 2022 to February 2023. And then finally, the 100 block east from February to March 2023. While we were meeting with the businesses, it was instrumental to make sure that we confer to them that at no time will their businesses be impacted by the streetscape. They will always be able to access their storefront with the exception of one day when we'd be pouring directly in front of their business where they would need to close down. But we've assured them that we'll work on a day maybe they're closed or allow them to utilize their back entrance on that day. So I think it's just key for communication with city staff to keep that communication and lines going. As many of you are aware, you probably saw a lot of equipment downtown. This week, we've started boring for our fiber and cameras. So we're very excited just to report the update. And each month as we go along through the process, I'll provide updates at our meetings. But just really want to give a shout out to our Public Works crew and Josh and his leadership. They are doing this work and it's been instrumental in getting us kicked off. And that's just the update I had for tonight.
I guess to a degree, we see the land development plan in action because we've seen a great change in Scale Street with the trees being moved. And next, we're going to see some action in reference to some beautification. And it's going to be gradual, so it won't be anything just happening just like that. So that's, that's going to work nice. Anyone have a question or two?
I just have a comment. I have had conversation with several of the business owners downtown. They are all extremely pleased with how this has been conducted so far, the notifications that they've been given, the information that they have. They are extremely happy about that and they look forward to the results.
Everybody seems to feel special because you put a special touch by being there. That means a lot. Next update. Status of requests for qualifications for CDBG-CV project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have our city marketer, I believe Judy Arber. Did you want to speak on this item? I'll be glad to take care of it. Judy and her team have worked really hard for the penthouse. In your packet tonight, as you can see, the city has advertised for the request for qualifications for the CDBG-CV project at the penthouse. They were due on Thursday, July the 7th. That's why we apologize for not getting them in your packet. But we did have a chance, believing this was sent out to you via email as well. We did get actually two requests for qualifications. And what we would like to suggest tonight is the selection committee comprised of Chris Phillips, Josh Beck, and Judy Arber reviewed and scored the proposals that were received on July 7th. And after combining the score sheets from each committee member, it was determined that CPL was the selected firm. Based on several ongoing projects and their current workload, the city feels confident that CPL is qualified to do this work and asks that city council allow us to begin with contract negotiations.
Any questions? We didn't vote on this?
Yes, sir.
I get a motion that we contract CPL architect engineering plan?
Second.
End of discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Board and commission appointment. Public comments next on the agenda. Do you have anyone who'd like to make any comments tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to the manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you. So just to kind of give some updates with Cypress Drive. In our report, city staff met with Whiprell Engineering on June 23rd to discuss improvements to Cypress Drive. Whiprell is working on preparing our project schedule for the city. The engineering firm is estimating a feasibility package to be presented to city council after September 13th meeting. And I will continue to provide updates as we move forward with securing design options for this project. Then also really want to commend Haywood Cloud, our assistant city manager and who's over community development with the Parks and Rec Department. They've been really working hard on repainting, remodeling the bathrooms at Lake Greensville. There's new interior paint, seats, toilets, mirrors, and baby changing stations that his team has been working on, given our, like, a little bit of an update. The scat bus shelters, we're still continuing to work on those with ADTS. And then a couple other ones I do want to mention in my report. The first one that our finance officer and assistant city major brought to my attention and his apologies for not being here today. He's actually in Pella at UNC School Government. But one thing just to bring to the city council's attention is we are going to be looking at some repair work that's needed to be done at Governor Reed's house. We're looking at probably repair work up to around 150,000. We'll be looking at this as we move forward in our carryover process. This is some work just to make you aware of that we will need to look at doing for Governor Reed's house. Also, right before our meeting, did receive an update on the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, the Youth Development Center. I've emailed this to each of you, but kind of a status update. They are recording that they are 49% complete with a concurrent projection of their project to be completed August 31st of 2023. So they are still on track at 49%. And then the last thing I would like to do, an update for mayor and city council. As many of you are probably aware, we entered into a contract with retail strategies. We began this contract in 2017 and we renewed the contract in 2020. We are in our final stage of this contract and it is the recommendation of myself as manager and city staff not to renew this contract. In the five years the city of Greensville has had this contract, very few, if any, leads have come from this company. And it is $25,000 a year. We are well within our timeframe to get out of this contract. We worked with our attorney on drafting that letter. But I just feel like for the, for the $25,000 that's taxpayers' dollars, we are not seeing any return with that. I think it was a great initiative to try, but I do not see, and in talking with staff, any results that have come in from Reed, that have been drive of retail strategies. So I am suggesting that we terminate that contract. And there's no penalty. We just would choose not to renew. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, manager's work. Council member reports. Mayor, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things on my part. Had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting of the new ABC store. And I want to, to thank everybody that was involved in putting that together. It was a long time coming, a lot of work. It was very, very impressive. Also attended the Zion Baptist Church Men's Day Celebration. And that was on the 25th of June. They gave me an opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the city of Greensville and the mayor. And it was, it was just a really good day. And I can tell you that Zion Baptist is very appreciative of all the things that the city of Greensville and this, this reason city council is doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I am a member of the Kiwanis Club, so on Thursdays I do attend their meetings and they are very active in our community, especially with projects for kids. On June 23rd, I attended the ABC ribbon cutting. June 28th, the RDC meeting. June 30th, council special meeting. July 4th, the Independence Day celebration at Lake Greensville, which was a great day. The weather was great until a little bit later, till just before the fireworks. But we had good attendance, not as many people as I think that we've had in the past. But it was a good day. And I commend Parks and Rec for the job that they did organizing it. Our police department, our public works. It took so many people to make that day happen. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that. On July 8th, I was very happy to celebrate my 28th wedding anniversary. So we had dinner at Burke Manor in Gibsonville and I asked, we asked a lot of questions about how that B&amp;B got established and what they have to do to make, to make it work so that we can learn from them about what we need to do here in Greensville. Also wanted, since I mentioned the Kiwanis Club, Mike Fargus, who passed away. I mentioned the Kiwanis Club, Mike Fargus, who passed away, Mike loved Reedsville. He was very active in civic organizations in Reedsville. He was president of the Reedsville Rams Booster Club, president of the Chamber of Commerce, president of the Reedsville United Way, and he was a very active member of the Reedsville Habitat for Humanity, and his heart was with the Kiwanis Club. He joined the Kiwanis Club in January of 1961 and served all the offices of the club. He also served as the lieutenant governor of North Carolina District 7 for Kiwanis, and he received the Legion of Honor Award in 2010 for 50 years of his dedication of service to the organization. He was a very big supporter of our all-inclusive park that we're building. He was so excited about that, and I strongly regret that he won't be here for it. He and his wife, Maxine, were getting ready to celebrate 68 years of wedding bliss, and they were always so happy. They were inseparable, and he was also getting ready to celebrate his birthday of 85 years. He will be strongly missed. Thank you.
Mike had a trademark smile.
He did.
Every time I saw him, he had that same good smile on his face.
And he was always happy and so cheerful about anything that was going on that he could be a part of.
Never met a stranger. The first time I met him was through Kiwanis, and it was just like talking to someone I've known all my life.
Councilwoman Dejeanette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month has been a pretty good month. I attended the Annie Penn Foundation Board meeting, and they are excited about building the garden and completing it this summer, next year by nature, hopefully. And I attended the Community Development Business Meeting, the Reedsville Chamber of Commerce Meeting, and the Special Counsel Meeting. And hopefully, I'll be taking a vacation soon.
Star says she's the liaison for Chamber. If you want to do your report now. You're a lot more comfortable looking tonight.
All right, our new members, we've got the Lanins of Rockingham, the ACR Technology, Wheezy's Bakery, Mary E.D. Ryan Art, and then our upcoming events, of course, this Thursday, our big ice cream social. And that would be from 4:30 to 7:30. Then our next one is our concert on Square, July 23rd, and our upcoming ribbon cuttings. Y'all get ready. Reedsville Equipment on July the 15th at 12 o'clock. Rise Up Professional Services, July the 21st at 9:00 a.m., and that would be at the Chamber. The Reedsville Primary Care, August the 2nd of 2022 at 4:00. And then Annie Penn Hospital, Wright Chapel Ribbon Cutting and Dedication would be August the 5th at 2:00. Boardwalk Baker, August the 11th at 12:00, and that would be at the Chamber. And of course, I beg to do our annual golf tournament, August the 17th. And our Reedsville Chamber Coffee will be at the Chamber, and it will be hosted by the Greensboro Swam, and that starts at 9:00.
Star, when we get an email, what we all got?
Of course.
Okay. Councilwoman Larry.
I also want to say that, just piggyback on what we said about Mike Fargus, he certainly was a very, very precious person, a dear friend to me and this entire city, and he will really be missed. And also want to say that Bishop Alphazal Millicent was also a great, great leader of this city. He loved the city of Reedsville, worked closely with the police department, community watch programs, and in the early days of Market Street, he, his church was present there, and he was always just a very helpful person. So these are two great, great and outstanding leaders that certainly be missed, and our prayers are to the family. Also, I want to say kudos to our police department, fire department, code enforcement, and Public Works on Operation Clean Sweep. And we got comments from the citizens in the community that were very pleased in the Washington Avenue area, and abandoned cars and high grass, and installed in smoke detectors and whatnot, and the people were very, very appreciative of it. And again, it's just one of those things, I think, that is so much needed today, keeping our neighborhood close with, working along with the employees of the city and vice versa. So again, a great job on that. I also have two things. I attended the regional ministry alliance there, closing cookout, and they had it done at J.C. Park on South Scale Street this past Friday, and had just a great, great attendance, and they had a great year of things that they worked together to do in the city, and taking a summer break, and looking forward to coming back in September. That's under the leadership of Dr. Michael Galloway. And also attended the Human Relations Commission meeting, and they also were enforcing their plans, and they also taking a break for the summer, and should be coming back in August. And so that's my report.
Councilwoman Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 23rd of June, I attended an ABC board meeting, and after that, was thrilled to be a part of the ribbon cutting. And for those of you that do not know, the new ABC store, our second ABC store, is located on Diesel Drive, which is across from Love's Travel Center off of the Barn Street Connector. So take a visit out. It's really, really a nice place. Also, on that day, I attended the Parents Commission meeting. On the 28th of June, I attended a roundtable meeting with elected officials and representatives for the city of Eden to discuss issues. On the 30th, I attended a meeting here to do the very last cleanup, one item budget for the fiscal year, thanks to our finance director. We've got all that taken care of and everything. Also, on that day, I went to the police station and attended the retirement of Pastor James Therington, our police chaplain. He is not leaving town, but he is retiring from that, but he will still be around and just a, he's been such an asset to the police department and to the whole community. I had a chance to visit his church numerous times, and it was just absolutely wonderful. The meeting on the 30th for the last item of the fiscal year, Councilman Festerman brought his roommate for the summer to meet us, a very nice young man. Councilman Festerman, Chris?
Chris.
Chris, this is the second year that Councilman Festerman has opened his home and his expertise to a young man traveling from all over the country, and it takes a lot to have someone else in your home. And we appreciate you doing that and appreciate them doing this for the city, for the baseball team. My soapbox issue, which you alluded to earlier when you talked about doing something, I'd like to thank everyone who has been involved and our city manager for our SCAP bus shelters. This has been something that we needed for a long, long time. Our residents who do drive our, who ride our SCAP bus are waiting out in the elements in the heat, and I think we felt that last week, and we'll feel it again towards the end of the week, I think. They're out there in the cold, and we really do need those shelters. And when, you know, we get that first one, I'm going to be so excited. So thank everyone and appreciate everything you do. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Fester.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Councilwoman Ward, it's kind of worked. I think I've gotten more out of than I put into having that guest. The last two years have been awarding experience. But I'd also like to say something myself with those kind of remarks made about my dear friend, Mike Fargus. However, I'd like to add one thing that was left out that he would want to say. He was an avid, avid Tar Heel fan. So he, 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 he carried on good all the way.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes my remark. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. My report, planning board on 6:15. On 6:15, I also attended the Kiwanis Club meeting. 6:18, I was at the first Juneteenth celebration at Market Square. On 6:22, I was at the employee wellness check at the penthouse. 6:23, I was at the new ABC store ribbon cutting. We have two ABC stores in Little Reedsville. 6:25, I was at Ron Flack's retirement gala at George Kays in Greensboro. 6:28, RDC meeting. 6:28, meeting with the Eden manager and other municipal and county leaders at Eden City Hall. On 6:30, another Kiwanis Club meeting. On 6:30, special call meeting for the discussion of a budget item. 6:30, Pastor Therington's retirement. 6:30, met with leaders of the new proposed charter school, which is proposed to be opening next fall of 2023 at Covington Church. And on 7:02, I was glad to be at the Independence Celebration at beautiful Lake Reedsville, where Councilwoman Scoville was the mistress of ceremony. She did a fantastic job. That concludes my report. Okay. Appointments.
Okay, there was one for the Reedsville Planning Board, and Ms. Jamie Branch, who was applying for a five-year term on the planning board, was unanimously elected.
There be nothing else? There's got a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.